Uh, for me.
And Carter's here.
Carter's here, okay. So, all the council members are here.
And I believe the mayor just joined us. All right, um, even though this is a study session, so we're going to skip the occasion and pledge of allegiance. And uh, we get roll call. Uh, do we need an authorization to excuse any council members?
No.
Okay. Okay, uh, I would, uh, like for someone to make a motion to move item seven, eight, nine, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and seventeen, uh, above the item number five.
I'm low. Support, if somebody already moved it.
It's been moved by Waterman and supported by Pila, uh, any discussion? Okay.
Just so we're clear, that's seven, eight, nine, twelve, thirteen.
Seven, eight, nine, ten.
Ten.
Wait. Thirteen, fourteen, and seventeen.
Okay.
Yes.
Above five.
Uh, above item number five. It's been, uh, moved by Waterman and supported, uh, by, uh.
Pila, I got that.
Uh, and then I would ask that the balance of the rest of the items be the same.
I'll move.
Board.
All right. It's been moved and supported, uh, any discussion? Seeing now a roll call.
So you, you have two motions, you gotta vote on the first one.
Uh, let's do it. Yep, that was item seven, eight, nine, and ten, uh, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and seventeen.
Above five. Miller?
Yeah.
Pila?
Yes, but I did have a question, although I wasn't given the opportunity to ask that question.
Shramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Then the second motion was to postpone the other items to, uh, next week, is that right?
That is where I have a question, and Mr. President.
Okay.
Did I get that motion correct?
Yeah, can, uh, uh, who moved?
It was moved by Waterman.
It was too.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Support Taylor Burke.
Right, was to postpone o- other items.
As time for discussion, uh, go on Pila.
Mr. President, my question is, is we are, are we going to postpone these closed sessions? Because they have been carried over from the past. And closed session is number five.
Yes, I'm talking about everything except for the closed session, so thank you for catching that. So I wanna amend that, uh, to the balance of size, items, facts, and services.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, Attorney Gibbs?
So then you need to, they need to withdraw their motions.
I withdraw, and then I support the new motion.
I withdraw, and then I support.
So we're postponing other items except for five and six for voting.
Yes, uh, Mr. Gibbs?
Just a, a quick kinda question or point, point of order for you, Mr. President. On the Kevadiya item under economic development that deals with the extension of a grant, um, by rule at the state level, that would have to be done by, uh, the end of October. Um, and so by postponing it, I'm hoping we could combine both the work, work study presentation, and then a potential resolution, um, you know, obviously not binding to anything, um, at next meeting, because that's very, very tiny sense of it.
Also, Madam?
Uh, can you, Mary, you have some feedback?
Now, I'm pointing.
All right, move to your office, will be helpful.
Now they gotta get.
Council President?
Yep.
So as it relates to that, I would imagine that you guys, uh, the council was going to vote for that, uh, or have to vote for it by next week anyway, is that correct? Because this was just a, uh, study session, so next week would be a formal, anyway.
Okay. Okay.
Absolutely, Kevadiya.
Okay, um, roll call?
Shramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams? Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Pila?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of privilege to tell the public council something that may be timely, uh, of importance that, uh, you may need to be informed about, um, now that you have postponed the items.
Go, go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Yes, there are certain items, particularly the ones that are closed by the treasurer, that if you postpone until next week, uh, generally, uh, then that would be a formal session, because they need to be, uh, before the county commission, that if you postpone the week that, um, in order to meet that time, you'd also have to prepare to vote on them next week. So I just wanted to bring that to your intention, uh, if you decide not to discuss them, uh, even today. Uh, so next week would be the last week you have before, or, uh, we would miss the opportunity to present them before the county commission would have to approve them. Otherwise, it would be a cost, uh, detriment to the city, not to have that approved by the county, county, county commission.
Yeah, it may cost the city ninety thousand, one hundred seventy-seven dollars.
Okay, uh, thank you, um, duly noted. All right, um, so, uh, we had a roll call on that, do we vote on that, Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Okay, now we need a motion to approve the, uh, the, and, the, the.
Love.
Board.
We need a motion to approve the agenda's amendment.
Yeah, it's moved by Waterman, supported by Taylor Burks.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing now roll call?
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
President, you muted.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes. Yes.
Pila?
Yes.
Shramsky?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays. So now, when we're going to item number seven, Mr. President?
Hello?
Where we going to item?
Four.
Seven now. Oh, four was taken off you.
Yep, yep.
Seven, eight, and nine, and ten.
So the, so clearly, the only item to discuss is seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and seventeen.
Correct, Mr. Clerk, um, which brings us to item number four, which is the Public Safety, uh, subcommittee report.
I thought you had taken that off you, didn't, to call another item.
No, those are going above five.
Those going above five, so, yep. You gotta do the approval minutes, I'm sorry. Um, we need a, uh, meeting September twenty-ninth, uh, twenty-twenty.
Sound wave.
Court. Moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing now roll call?
Uh, Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yeah.
Pila?
Yes.
Did you say Shramsky? Yes.
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
Okay, thank you, uh, which brings us to, uh, the meeting minutes of October sixth, twenty-twenty.
Sound wave, support.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing now roll call?
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Pila?
Yes.
Shramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
Okay, which brings us to the meeting minutes of October thirteenth, twenty-twenty.
Sound wave.
Board.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing now roll call?
Carter?
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 Yes.
Miller?
Yeah.
Pila?
Yes.
Shramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman? Waterman?
Yeah.
Williams?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
Okay, minutes approved, which brings us to item number four, subcommittee, uh, public safety report. And I would also like, uh, uh, councilwoman, uh, I mean, uh, clerk to read the resolution, um, item number nine at the same time.
All I have.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Pila, and then.
All I have to say about our fire, uh, for our public safety period, we submitted the reports, the reports are in the documents, I would like to go with them, but I would like to give credit to our firefighters and our ten deputies, altogether ten, seven deputies that blocked the traffic, but that's in the resolution that, um, the clerk is going to read into the record. So with that, Mr. President, let's keep in mind that we are under response time of fi- of six minutes, five minutes, and forty-three seconds. The state requires six, and we are doing it well. Um, one of the, one of the individuals, one of the firefighters that the clerk will mention does come from Fire Station Three, so when I say we have nine stations, that's exactly what I mean. Anybody that comes from outside of the stations, six, seven, eight, and nine, are coming from Waterford, and this lieutenant comes from Station Number Three, which is a Waterford station. Mr. Clerk?
Okay, I need a motion to suspend the rules, so we can vote on item number nine.
I move.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported, uh, any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, now, Mr. Clerk, can you read the resolution?
Well, you made a motion to suspend the rules.
Oh, okay, roll call, I'm sorry.
Miller? Pila?
Yes.
Shramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Okay, this resolution, uh, uh, which. City of Pontiac Resolution Recognizing Our Heroes. Whereas it is sensitive body to a proper tribute to individuals of great character who realize and exemplify the highest ideals of humanity. Whereas on September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, Oakley County deputies and Water Regional Fire Station Six were dispatched to one-hundred block Arkdale Avenue in the city of Pontiac for a ten-month-old infant event who was fully conscious and not breathing. And whereas Lieutenant James Todd and the Waterford Regional Firefighter Paramedics, Kenneth Estelle, and C.J. Walton arrived at the scene and within a split second determined that time was of the essence, and there was no, no time to make for EMS. So they loaded the child into the backseat of the patrol car, and continued performing CPR while our deputy, John Dean, drove the patrol car to McLaren Oakland Hospital. Whereas deputies Samuel James, Colin Kavanaugh, Brandon Nolan, Amir Azarwadi, and Brian Blackburn also took immediate action by assisting with traffic and clearing for the path for the patrol car to arrive at the hospital speedily and safely. And whereas, at a conscious of the lifesaving measures, taking proficiency training, collaboration between Oakley County deputies and Waterford Regional Firefighters, the infant was resuscitated. And whereas, these first responders are truly heroes in every sense of the word as they arrive, as they are motivated by selfless, moral, and physical courage as they risk their own lives to save the life of another illness of a global crisis, the COVID-nineteenth epidemic. Now therefore, it be resolved, the mayor of the city of Pontiac and the members of Pontiac City Council recognize and salute our first responders for their contribution of future self-sacrifice, heroism to the community.
All right, is there a motion?
I'm not.
Support?
Uh, it's been moved by P, uh, Pila, supported by Carter. Any discussion? Seeing now roll call?
Pila?
Yes.
Shramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Okay, motion passed, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Seven yeas, no nays.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Clerk, motion passes, which brings us to item number seven. Uh, councilwoman Waterman, I know we deferred this because the date was not correct at the time.
Yeah, uh, yes, Mr. President, everything is in order with the, um, ordinance that's, uh, proposed was today, so I would ask that this is also, the rules are suspended, so we can vote in a front letter to move this forward.
Okay, is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So.
Support.
Okay, did you get the move and support, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, roll call?
Shramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller? Miller?
Yeah.
Pila?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
Okay, motion passes, uh, just two rules. Um, I need a motion, uh, to vote on.
Love.
And then this.
Board.
Employees Retirement System, and provide a date of termination. This item was deferred on September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, Councilman.
So this will be.
I support.
So this will be the first reading, and then, uh, you can come back next week to see that. After I publish, publish some paper.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, any discussion?
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yeah.
Pila?
Yes.
Shramsky?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, which brings us to item number eight. Mr. Clerk, you have a letter that was sent to Matt Gibbs, I would ask that you read that, and then read, uh, sent from Matt Gibbs, and then, uh, read the city council resolution.
Regarding res- resolution regarding mediation fee in Center, members of council, in the agenda package of the October twen- October twenty, twenty-twenty city council meeting, is a proposed resolution asserting that the city council has allocated seven million for parking structure repairs outlined in the settlement agreement for the Phoenix Center, and further seeking to reaffirm, reaffirm the date of the mediation brought on by the anticipatory default of that agreement. The city council has been consistent as to the status of both mediation and the potential application of the funds set aside by council from the city's fund balance. Presentations throughout the May, June, and July of this year set forth anticipated and estimated cost of the parking structure repairs at the Phoenix Center and what repairs to be completed using set aside funds. The council was presented, and the clerk remains in possession of a complete set of all plans and engineering documents showing specifically what is to be repaired using the partial funding approached host council and without obligation for many. These two applies to seven million allocation were presented to council in July and rejected by council in August. At that time, council was advised that mediation would recommence during the last week of October twenty-twenty, as the city would not be able to meet the November one, twenty-twenty deadline in the settlement agreement. Mediation is scheduled to recommence on October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, under the direction of Doug Rosen and the council. We have informed of any progress or proposed resolutions through its regular practice of closed sessions. Mediation scheduling and process is at the discretion of Doug Rosen, so every effort will be made to present timely updates. The resolution presents a false narrative that may affect the city's standing to either resolve the matter through mediation or through a global private partnership, as it does not contain accurate information and may only serve to increase the appearance of discord. It is respectfully asked that it is removed from the agenda or otherwise disregarded. If you want me to read the resolution? Resolution, A, resolution for Phoenix Center mediation fee. Whereas the emergency manager seeking to cut costs sought to demolish the Phoenix Center, which triggered a lawsuit with Ottawa Towers. And whereas the city's legal department, after several unsuccessful appeals, advised the Pontiac City Council to enter into a settlement agreement with Ottawa Towers. And whereas the city of Pontiac entered into a settlement agreement with Ottawa Tower Two LLC and the North Bay Drywall Incorporated Profit Sharing Plan and Trust on November one, twenty-eighteenth. And whereas the parties participated in mediation and agreed upon the material terms of the settlement of their disputes. And whereas in consideration of the immediate discharge of all needs and encompasses of the Phoenix Center, the city was required to pay three million, five hundred thousand dollars upon execution of all settlement documents in addition to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in full and final reimbursement for all recurring fees and costs. And whereas the section entitled maintenance repair and improvements to the Phoenix Center in total, more specifically, section six point two of the settlement agreement, requires that in addition to the payments set forth in the agreement, the city shall pay up to six million dollars over a ten-year period beginning as the effective date of the agreement for the, for the maintenance and capital repair of the improvements to the Phoenix Center necessary to bring and maintain the Phoenix Center in performance with the requirements of the Internal Property Interaction or Property Maintenance Code, twenty-fifteen edition, as referenced in the Michigan Building Code and the Michigan Rehabilitation Code, twenty-fifteen edition. Passed on April twenty eighth, twenty-twenty, the Pontiac City Council, in an effort to comply to settlement agreement, as well as, as being the source and overseers of the plans of the city, passed the resolution for a budget amendment requiring that seven million dollars taken from the general fund one-on-one and allocated to the Phoenix Center five, eight, five, five, six, four, dash, nine, seven, four, dash, zero, three, five, for parking structure repairs. Subsequently, the council further provided that these funds be secured in the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one fiscal year's budget. Whereas to date, there have been no repairs made to the Phoenix Center, and the executive has indicated to the council that the city will be going back to mediation. Now therefore, it be resolved, Pontiac City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Pontiac, requests that the mediation date, time, and location are be provided to the Pontiac City Council during the council meeting on Tuesday. Say, now, Tuesday, October twentieth, twenty-twenty, twentieth. He has further resolved that the council further request that the date, time, and location of any and all legal proceedings related to the Phoenix Center be provided to the council in writing at least two weeks, fourteen days, prior to the actual date of the proceeding.
Okay, um, is there a motion to suspend the rules?
I move.
Support?
It's been moved and supported, roll call?
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yeah.
Pila? Pila? Pila?
Yeah, I don't see her, uh, her, I'm sorry.
Okay, Shramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays, Mr. President.
Uh, hold on, uh, Pila's just coming back, he answered. Let me read, uh, the law. This is in the rules, Councilwoman Pila.
Right. Pila?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays, Mr. President.
I got kicked out, sorry about that.
Okay, now, would you get a motion to vote on, to the board, item number eight?
Love.
Board.
We're moving, uh, just, uh, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, and if I might. As regards to this, I, I feel that council and the citizens have an absolute right to know where and when all quarter dates are to occur. The settlement agreement did not involve council board. The mayor just went on TV saying that the city may go into receivership again, and administration, from by Mr. Gibbs, has the nerve to ask us to take our resolution off the agenda. Because it may give appearance of discord, and it presents a false narrative that affect the city's standards to either resolve or settle the matter through mediation. I find that, uh, disheartening when our mayor just went on TV, Fox Two, five to five o'clock, uh, just, to give, uh... I find that uh disheartening when our mayor just went on TV, Fox Two, five to five o'clock uh to s- to give uh. Whatever, an interview. So I I find that to be. I can't say what I wanted to say, but okay. However.
Okay, any, any other discussion?
Mister Chair, may I give some corrective information?
I do, Mister President.
Miss Lynn. And also to respond to the uh resolution that you just passed because the information that you asked for within uh two weeks. Uh, that time is already within two weeks. So it was given to you previously, but I would like to give you today.
Uh, as you go ahead, Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you. Cause she gonna go on to speak when I get done. You know, this is absolutely, uh, I mean, you can't say why, but I'm gonna say it cause I'm gonna see who I am. It is very disheartening, very sad to see that our mayor went on. Okay, the city's going and been teaching. But she failed the talent that she's the reason that we're going there. She failed the talent that she's went on with a lawsuit for the last three or four years. She failed the talent that she's been brought many things before this council and she wouldn't try to work with us in no way and in form. So mayor, if you wanna start going on channel two, don't have to start going on four instead of someone that listen to us what really happening to this city. You are the reason. If this city going to the fuck. You are the reason. You trying to make yourself the good. And that's another thing. You keep berating them. The ministers in the city keep berating your council. There's more than one side for a story to keep on. I I can speak for myself and I can say I haven't seen any council members been on any TV show, been on Facebook, berating them. Well, I go along with everybody and I I don't do it. I don't want to do that. That's not how you negotiate. And to get on TV and channel two and berate them. If what's there, you're the you're the CEO of the city. If it goes down, you you was the CEO, you took it down there. This is Councilwoman Miller speaking. We worked on this for two years hard and we didn't have to beat you. And the citizens deserve better, much better.
Last time I had to do with the budget and all kinds of stuff, so I hate to say on the whole thing, but it lasted. I want to say it was like three.
Who's here to make the call? You yourself if you're not speaking.
Who is that?
I just, maybe, I I I have my, they trip his name with Congress people.
So I I I. I was only saying, I this is the most disgusting thing I've seen in a leader in my life. See, your plan, you deserve better than this. You don't negotiate with the public, you negotiate with the council. Okay, council.
Okay.
Mister President?
Yes. Councilwoman, thank you.
I I think all the council fun is to know what negotiations are going on, uh, what court dates are going on and I I think that's reasonable for us to ask that. And I also want to point out, we do have proposals on the table. You do not know whether we may or may not hook one of them. I hope you.
Okay, um, do you, Councilwoman, please? Anybody who wants to come to one, then, um, Madam. If you, if you, if you want to catch up, please, uh, cause I'm just trying to follow along and read my agenda at the same time.
Mister President?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, then, then Madam, and then I'll.
All right, let me read. Uh, I did email a document just now since I'm on my on my phone to, uh, the clerk and yourself. Because inside that was not mi- not mentioned was a uh document from the Court of Appeals that we had failed to talk about. It was, uh, March fifteenth, twenty sixteen. It was page number three, two, five, three, two, four, five, four, eight. At Oakland County Court, L C number two oh fourteen, that's one, three, nine, seven, six, one, C C. Because it 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 does speak on that the city tried to take the lien from Ottawa Towers. I understand what the resolution said, but inside the court document, the city tried to destroy the lien of the million plus dollars that the city owed to Ottawa Towers. And it need to be, it need to be entered in too, so the public knows exactly what happened. Thank you, sir. But I just, the council president received a copy and so does the clerk.
Okay, Mister Clerk, if you could mail it out to everybody when you get a chance, that would be great. Um, Madam Mayor, if you unmute yourself.
Yes, uh, I am, uh, speaking to a couple of things that were said.
You have to unmute yourself, Madam Mayor. You still talking, but you should unmute yourself. Or somebody, they don't think you asked to unmute.
All right. I'm. We have, uh, technology that, uh, they thought they had worked out here. Can you hear me now? They can't hear, hear me?
They can hear you.
Okay. Uh, apparently you can hear me, so we're just working with the technology here. Um, that, uh, two things I want to make sure that the public is aware of. So that, uh, they're not given misinformation. Number one, in terms of informing of the council and the public. Uh, what the mediation date is, we had told you that, uh, several weeks ago, it is in the letter that Attorney Gibb wrote you. But the date is October twenty eighth, uh, and that is led by Judge Rosen, um, most likely to be in his office. He has not given a time for that. Uh, we'd be happy to tell you about that. It's Judge Rosen who does declare as the mediator. He has control of that process. Um, the default date is November first and we wanted to forestall that, uh, absolute default. Because the city has not moved forward on the terms of the settlement agreement that the city council signed off on in November of two thousand eighteen. We have two years to do that. Now, Fox Two came to me because one of the, uh, people that you have asked us to negotiate with, uh, we're looking for other alternatives to keep from going into default. Uh, and that is something that came from this real estate subcommittee and was also, uh, uh, enforced by the rest of the council. To say that you wanted the administration to proceed ahead with negotiations with some of the offers that you had, including the one that you brought to city council some weeks ago. Uh, with Mister Stevens himself. We have pursued all those diligently. Uh, and in fact, we have had conversations with, uh, other entities, including yourself, Council President. And other council people that were at meetings. We had one yesterday. We had one last Friday. All trying to bring the council in to make sure that we're moving ahead. With the court and the ways that you want us to do, given the fact that our options are more limited, uh, at this late hour than they were two years ago when the process was supposed to start. Also, Fox Two News came because one of the developers that you asked us to negotiate with decided to go and take the story to Fox News and they called me just so I could clarify. What the process was going on. And the process is we're doing exactly like you have been us to do. Uh, and also the seven million dollars that you set aside. Uh, makes it seem that that was, should have been spent. But as you well know, counsel, the mayor cannot spend any money can appropriate unless council approves that. Uh, above ten thousand dollars. And steadfastly, you haven't given us the approval to go ahead with the repairs, which we have tried in number of occasions to get started on that. So we know now, uh, some, some ten or twelve days from the date of default. What we have done prudently is to go to the mediator and say, we're not going to be able to do two years worth of work. In ten days or however many. So we went ahead and went and said with the plaintiff, uh, also who is required, who has requested mediator set a date. And that's why we said October twenty eighth, but we are continuing to work right up on that time to the things council you have asked us to do. Uh, and in terms of pursuing the other possible options, many of which we have looked at over the last two years, some of which which will become more current and Mister Gibb. Was prepared to talk to you about that. But as you know, um, I hope you you're not, uh, taking off the closed session again because you know, we've missed, uh, three weeks. We had two weeks canceled council meetings, so we weren't able to present to you then, but we're continuing to try to bring you the information. In the Fox Two, I did not say receivership. That's a different thing. Default, and for most of you, is different from receivership. Default just means. That we haven't met the terms of the settlement agreement within the time we're allotted. Receivership, that's up to the state. Okay. Uh, and we're trying desperately to make sure that we don't have the.
We don't have the.
The problems visited of a default upon us by seeing if we can't reach some of our options. We'd hope for council's concurrence on that. And, uh, we hope if you're not going to have a closed session, like you have, um, uh, said what we're going to do. Uh, then how do you want us to discuss that with you? You want to be involved. Give us some direction and how we can involve.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, before I recognize other people, um, I had the clerk send out a letter, um, from my office. Um, to the general public, um, and to the minutes, and I'm just gonna read it really quickly. Everybody should have got it around five thirty. If you haven't got it. Uh, please let me know so I can make sure you get a copy. Uh, it's from the desk of Council President Williams. It says, Dear Pontiac residents. This letter is written, uh, to address several of the issues that have been unresolved in the city of Pontiac. A bullet point number one, Phoenix Center. For the past two years, the city council has suggested three options for the structure. One, private, uh, public-private partnership. Two, the sale of the Phoenix Center. Three, the purchase of Ottawa Towers. In June of this year, this year, the city council allocated, and somebody's got some feedback going on, so mute yourself. Thank you. Uh, the city council allocated seven million for repairs to restore the Phoenix Center to work in order. At this point, those repairs are yet, uh, to start. COVID nineteen may have been a contributing factor. I, President Williams, reached out to the Stevens family directly in an effort to resolve the matter. City administration informs me that they are working on a plan. With several possible developers. However, I am not willing, uh, to put the taxpayers at risk and have reached out to county and state officials to help for guidance on securing funds. Second, uh, bullet point, forensic audit. One major responsibility of the city council is to request a forensic audit. If deemed necessary by the council. On June seventeenth, twenty twenty, the city council unanimously passed a resolution to engage. Bonadilla Group, a certified public accounting firm, to perform a forensic audit a- and agreed to submit a retainer of ten thousand dollars. The city attorney is currently refusing to let Bonadilla start work. Bullet point number three, payment of bills. Outstanding invoices from both the parliamentaria and Clark Hill P L C, uh, total cost to sixty thousand dollars. And some invoices date back to two thousand and nineteen have not been paid, hampering the council's ability to carry out duties of the legislative branch of government. I have, uh, researched since nineteen eighty-two. No council has been impeded from spending or paying for services to carry out the work of the citizens. I have attached resolutions, uh, to add documentation for these claims I have made. However, I want you to know, uh, as a citizen, despite these obstacles. The city council is working hard every day to fulfill the commitment we made when we took oath of office, Council President Williams. And then there's a disclaimer at the bottom. These views are solely the views of President Williams. Any use, copy, dissemination without the express written consent of Kermit Williams is prohibited. So I just wanted to put that out there so we can have something in the record about where we are, uh, publicly and those are my thoughts. Uh, no other council person, uh, uh, tripped in on that, had this comment stripped from my, does. I just want to put, uh, on that, and then, uh, turn this to her.
I just wanted to, uh, just say briefly, usually with, uh, my experience, uh, of court dates and any judge, I don't dispute that Judge Rosen, uh, is handling his schedule. Uh, however, as the mayor indicated, it's in fact, they've known about this mediation date for quite some time, which if we were, if if you go to, uh, Attorney Gibb's letter. That letter was written today and not two weeks ago. You did not have the date two weeks ago. Uh, I am not believing that, uh, Judge Rosen does not have a time set. That that just is unfathomable to me. Uh, obviously, we need. Well, I don't think that it's, uh, not, um, it's in the best interest of for the council as well as the citizens to be able to have these court dates, times, and locations. And quite frankly, I believe that at least one member of council should attend the mediation. Uh, and so therefore to ask, uh, for future court dates in advance. Uh, they're given typically at least three weeks, at least two weeks in advance. So there's never any last minute, uh, issuing of court dates and times. So that is so not true. Uh, so again, I don't think that this is, uh, something that council should not be privy to. You have the absolute right to have this information. If you're, is you're a client, uh, the the city attorney, they represent the council of the city and you are the decision makers. The, uh, executives, the mayor has the right to veto, but overall you have to actually pass the resolution on accepting any type of agreement. So therefore you need to have some form of input. You guys did not have any input in that, so the agreement. The only thing you did was sign off on it. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. President, a frank reminder. Okay, thank you. Motion on the floor. I want to call for a call, roll call. Trying to give the truth to the resident. Roll call, roll call.
Wei- Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes, yeah.
Miller? Miller?
Yeah.
Hila?
Yes.
Shremsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Seven A's, no N's, Mister President.
All right, thank you. That brings us to our next item. Uh, item number ten. Mister Clerk, can you read the resolution?
This is resolution to reduce the spread of COVID nineteen. Whereas, uh, eight, eight, April fourteenth, twenty twenty, the Pontiac City Council in an attempt to reduce the spread of COVID nineteen, passed a resolution authorizing the mayor to contract. Restoration one in amount not fifty, fifteen thousand dollars for the cleaning, sanitizing, disinfecting, disinfecting. City Hall, Fifty Fifth District Court, Ruth Peterson Senior Center and Owens Senior Center. Whereas to date, the deep cleaning, sanitizing, disinfecting of City Hall, Fifty Fifth District Court, Ruth Peterson Senior Center. And Bowens Senior Centers have not been cleaned. And whereas during the budget discussion and amidst the peak of the COVID nineteen and then the city council. And the executive discussed and agreed to remove the fabric seats in council chambers and replace them with vinyl seats. Thereby allowing the proper routine cleaning and disinfecting. And whereas the date the seats have not been removed or replaced. Whereas during budget discussions, there was further discussion regarding issuing R F Es for ventilation, cleaning of the council chambers. And whereas due to the COVID nineteen, the Michigan legislature passed legislation allowing for public bodies to meet virtually until December thirty first, twenty twenty. And whereas COVID nineteen, more specifically CDC Social Distancing Guidelines, ma- mandate that council chambers be limited to fourteen people. And whereas due to the increased cost. incurred by the city due to COVID nineteen, the city of Pontiac, upon signing the interlocal agreement with Oakland County, is entitled to air reimbursable expenses. Of up to one million five hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-seven. Um, dollars and fifty cent. And whereas both the replacement of the vinyl chairs and the cleaning of the ventilation ducts in the council chambers. Are reimbursable expenses verified by the office of the Oakland County Executive. Whereas the city of Pontiac can make several submissions to Oakland County for reimbursement until the deadline of November thirty, twenty twenty. And now therefore, it resolves, Pontiac City Council is requesting the D R F E for both the replacement of the chairs in the council chambers. So the cleaning and ventilation ducts in council chambers be issued immediately. It further resolves the purchase orders for both the chairs and council chambers. And the cleaning of the ventilation ducts be included and submitted to Oakland County and the air's possible reimbursement for Pontiac. And the replacement of the chairs and the cleaning of the ducts be completed before December thirty first, twenty twenty.
All right, I turn to your chair.
Yes, I just, I wanted to say that again, uh, it's verified through the, um, uh, executive office, Oakland County Executive Culture Office. That the chairs and the cleaning are reimbursable expenses. Um, I don't believe, as I indicated, uh, to that office, that council was aware of the fact that there is one million five hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. Of reimbursable expenses. And again, you, um, the city can make multiple submissions, um, because I was informed that. The office of the sort of, of the executive, Oakland County Executive, actually reached out to the city of Pontiac to ask, uh, in fact, that they were going to submit. And they were asking for the, um, submissions which they have. And they were asking for the, um, submissions, which they haven't received any. So I don't think, once again, this is an unreasonable request because, uh, council had these discussions, um, during budget, um, during the preparation of the budget. And at that time, council, uh, discussed allocating money for the chairs as well as cleaning the vent. Uh, you were informed that the ventilation cleaning was rather costly. Uh, and because of COVID, uh, you can actually have this reimbursed. So it just only makes sense that you guys, uh, could have this done before December thirty-first, and it would not be at a cost to the city because it's reimbursable. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? You want to decide?
Yes, Mr. President, I would move to suspend and also, since this is item number ten, we can deal with fourteen right along with it.
Mr. Chair, would you like the DPW department to speak in terms of what they have done for COVID preparation? And this includes this item as well, if you'd like that information. Are you giving it, or is he going to give that?
Okay, who supported it?
It's hard. I, I support it.
Okay, this is just a suspended rule. Roll call?
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yeah.
Peetla?
Yes.
Shramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Okay. So vote on item number ten?
I move.
Support.
All right, I take the move from Taylor Burks, the supporter from Shramsky. Uh, any city council discussion? CNN, roll call?
Miller?
Yeah.
Peetla?
Yes.
Shramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Seven eight's, one name, Mr. President.
Mr. Chair, if I would have appointed, the DPW director is already underway with these processes, as they have been for many of the COVID-19 preparations for our city facilities, not only City Hall, but the other buildings as well. He is here and can give you the information about how the DPW is taking that under charge to make sure that we have preparation for all our city facilities. And he, Mr. Rango is here, if you would like to hear, uh, the information related to the resolution.
So right now about the duct cleaning in the council chambers and our new chairs?
He's prepared to talk about that as well as the other COVID-19 preparations of the City Hall.
Want to hear about that part, so.
Right. Would you like to have that information?
If you can hear that, I have to.
Mr. Rango? Go ahead, Mr. Rango.
Go ahead, Mr. Rango.
All right, Taylor, uh, what was your comment?
Mr. President, uh, we have, uh, uh, we'll be reading tomorrow, so he can make that report tomorrow.
Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll forward the report next week. Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Newer, so we got a motion on the floor to vote on item number ten. It's been moved and supported. Uh, roll call?
You, you already voted on item ten, Mr. President.
Okay, now we need to vote for two minutes. There a motion on item fourteen?
No. Come on.
It's been moved and supported. Any city council discussion? CNN, roll call?
Peetla?
Yes.
Shramsky? Hamsky?
I don't see.
Yes.
Okay, I see. Uh, Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yeah.
Seven eight's, one name, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Doyle. Before we go into the final record discussion, I would ask the appointed president to allow our former state representative, Tim Brown, to speak for three minutes. He didn't know about the move of comment box.
I move.
Support.
Okay, okay, Mr. Brown, you got your next.
Well, thank you so much, President Williams and members of council, for, uh, the accommodation this evening. I'm sorry that I didn't realize, uh, that comments had to be submitted in writing by five-thirty of the, of the council meeting day. Um, I, I'm honored to speak because like so many other residents of Pontiac who have been following the, the Phoenix Center, uh, dynamic, uh, I'm greatly concerned about where this might end up if, uh, the mayor and council don't find some common ground here. Uh, if things aren't resolved by November first, as, as all of you know better than anyone, uh, one of two things is likely to happen. Uh, either, uh, a judgment is going to be entered against the city for a large sum of money, in which case there's a, a high risk that the city could be back in receivership and potentially have to declare bankruptcy. Or there could be a judgment entered on the tax bills of the city, in which case residents and businesses would be forced to pay off the judgment through much higher, uh, tax bills, through a tax level. Uh, I know that all of you want to avoid that outcome. And, uh, I, I just implore all of you to, to try to set aside your differences, to try to find common ground, to continue working at it. Uh, it's not going to be easy, I know, uh, but it's absolutely imperative if we're to avoid these cataclysmic and catastrophic outcomes for the city. Um, a number of us have, have, uh, urged potential private sector actors to reach out to the city. I know that, uh, many have. I know that some proposals have been submitted for various forms of public-private partnerships. Uh, but again, ultimately, uh, nothing can get resolved without the agreement of the mayor and city council. And I just urge you both to, to compromise, uh, and that, that means that the mayor will, will likely have to give up her idea of, of bonding, and the city council may not get everything that it wants either. But the most important thing is that we avoid these catastrophic outcomes for the city, and I urge all parties to just continue working hard towards that ultimate outcome. Thanks so much, and I know that you'll do what's in the best interest of the city and its residents.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brown. We're gonna move on to item number, uh, I believe it's thirteen. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, item number twelve, I'm sorry. I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Mr. Williams, um, just to make sure that we are on track with the legislation amendment that we need to move forward with item number thirteen.
Good evening, yes, Senator. Uh, the amendment is to, as you recall, when the initial budget was set, we set the finance director's salary of fifty thousand dollars. We left a balance in the other professional services line, and we were, and you told us that when we had a candidate with a, with a salary in mind, at that point, we transferred the funds from other professional services to the salary line. Uh, so what the budget amendment is for is to gate one thousand dollars and transfer it to the, from the other professional services line, transfer it to the salary line to set the, the finance director's salary at a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Go ahead, Karen.
Uh, I just, I wanted to put on the record that, uh, bank clients, that I wanted to do to the point of voting for the finance director, it will be null because of the amount of work I've got, was not going to pay a finance director a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. He did already, it's correct. I'm not going to do it. Uh, Mr. Zarko didn't get paid that much. And, uh, Mr. Uh, parenting credentials may be great, but it was no better than Mr. Zarko. I would not be voting for a hundred and thirty dollars. I just want to put that on record. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anybody else have comment?
Mr. President?
Yes, good, roll call.
Uh, I still haven't had the, the original problem, uh, addressed, whether or not, uh, Mr. Williams and Mr. Carrington, these two choose, will both be on the payroll at the same time. We need to have that resolved immediately. Thank you, sir.
Who can the administration answer to speak to that?
I can certainly answer that. Uh, and as, uh, first to the councilwoman Miller, who says that a hundred and thirty thousand dollars is much too high. Actually, that was exactly what our former, uh, uh, Mr. Zarko, at least, uh, was, uh, making for the city of Pontiac. And it's certainly, uh, currently, our current, uh, acting finance director from Plant Moran, uh, we've had to play Plant Moran rates as we were waiting to get our own. And, uh, he is currently making a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So we have paid more for a finance director because we haven't had our own. And that's what I'm trying to bring to the council now. We need to have our own finance director, particularly with all the things that are coming up for the city, uh, with the audit and the number of things that we need the finance department to be able to run. Uh, so we do ask the council, you had, uh, said to us before, uh, bring to you another candidate that was of high credentials, high caliber, uh, and, and highly credentialed. So we have done that, and you had said when we do that, we would put the money, uh, for the salary in that professional line item, and you would bring it out. We're asking you to do that now, true to what was the understanding as we went out and did the search for Mr. Carrington, who is ready to come, uh, to the city of Pontiac into service in that position.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess, um, I'm more confused now, uh, because you just talked to me about transition. If, uh, the finance director starts tomorrow, will Mr. Williams transition out?
He won't start. There will be a transition period. Uh, Plant Moran still will provide our accounting services, and Mr. Uh, Williams will still be doing, uh, some of that accounting as we orient. Uh, Mr. Carrington, uh, is waiting for this council to go ahead and approve because he has, uh, uh, his, his appointment, uh, as you have other directors, uh, so that he can give notice. It would be at least thirty days, so, uh, before, or somewhere in that, unless he can work out some other arrangements. But he has to give notice where he is right now, uh, and make sure that he, uh, extricates himself from all the responsibilities there. So we will be talking to him, but he is, of course, this has been on the agenda. I brought Mr. Carrington to you. Everybody was very impressed, uh, with his credentials and his ability, uh, to work effectively for the city of Pontiac. In fact, uh, council president's comment was, welcome to the city of Pontiac. So he's been waiting ever since, uh, to get that official affirmation of the city of Pontiac, uh, council as is stated in the city charter. So I hope we will do that this evening so we can move the city forward.
Uh, President?
President, yes.
I, I, I'm still confused about the question about the transition. So when he does come on board, how long will Mr. Williams continue in his position?
Mr. Williams will not be in the finance director position. Plant, he is a, he is an employee of Plant Moran. Plant Moran has provided certain accounting services. So that will be, uh, that will be downgraded to the position. He will be providing those kinds of accounting services, but he will not be acting as finance director because we will have a finance director at that time.
And he will go into the budget from Plant Moran?
Yes.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Attorney Sharp?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't really get the, uh, the answer to that, to Councilwoman Shramsky's question, because that was my question. Actually, the whole point of council doing this with the budget was to ensure that, again, uh, Mr. Williams would then come out as the finance director. Plant Moran would get their, uh, sal, the, the contract amount that they'd get, which is a little less than three hundred thousand. So the question that Councilwoman Shramsky just posed, which I'm asking also, is, is in the event that Mr. Uh, Williams is getting paid out of that three hundred thousand, a little bit less than that, that's allocated for Plant Moran, or is he going to be in addition to what you're paying Plant Moran?
No, he, he, right now, he is getting a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, okay? Which is much more than, than finance director line item that we're asking council to approve. So that's, as you see, will be a reduction, uh, in what we're getting, and we will go back to the regular Plant Moran contract once a Mr. Williams, not once Mr. Carrington, has fully come in and, uh, occupied the seat of finance director. So we would like that to be done, uh, quickly. He's been waiting ever since we brought him and introduced him to the city council, and that's been, I don't know, months and a half ago. So, um, he is highly been, uh, highly supported by other cities, and I hope we don't lose him, uh, in the fact that unless council makes a decision, uh, to keep him, because, um, we're not the highest-paying city, uh, as you know. And so it was good that we were able to, um, bring him here and attract him to the city. So I hope that we will recognize that and, and get this, uh, in place as quickly as we can.
I'm gonna reiterate my question. My question, again, so the money that's allocated for Plant Moran, is Mr. Williams taking from that allocation, or is he going to get a separate allocation once the council, if in fact, they vote to have, uh, Mr. Carrington come in as the new finance director? How will Mr. Williams be paid? Will he be paid from the Plant Moran pot or in a, in a subsequent?
He will be, uh, I'm not understanding the question, okay? We play Plant Moran according to contract, and we have a contract for the services they provide.
Take you back to time?
No, she got unmuted, sir. There you go.
Oh.
You're muted, ma'am.
All right. It, it muted itself, I guess. All right, so, so I think, I, I'm trying to understand your question. So we have a contract with Plant Moran, and the, uh, any, um, once we have a finance director who is in that finance director, then we'll be paid from that. And then any other Plant Moran employees will be paid from the Plant Moran contract allotment. So does that answer your question?
Okay, so once again, are you saying then once council, if in fact, they pass the resolution for Mr. Carrington, they allocate his salary of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, then Mr. Williams therefore is no longer going to be paid out of that amount, right? Because that's going to be for Mr. Carrington. And so therefore, he's just going to be getting paid from Plant Moran out of that three hundred thousand, and there is no other allocation in which he's going to, or no, no other pot in which, of money in which he's going to be paid from. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, uh, correct.
Good. And so again, the transition, you said thirty days?
Uh, that is about what it should be, yes.
That's about what it should be, or is that what it points to?
Um, it can be thirty days. Let's just make it, let's just make it thirty days, if that makes you satisfied. Thirty days. Okay, okay, thank you. Okay.
All right, so is there a motion, uh, for a resolution to approve the budget amendment for finance director?
Move.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? CNN, roll call?
Mr. President, this, this resolution, is that there would have to be an, oh, it's published first. Now you need to suspend the rules first, is what you have to, uh, do.
Okay, I need a motion to suspend the rules?
Move.
Support.
Roll call?
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller? Miller?
Oh, no.
Peetla?
Yes.
Shramsky?
Yes.
Six eight's, one name, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Now what do we have to do, Mr. Clerk?
So then you need a motion for number twelve, which actually is from the clerk to publish the notice of the budget amendment. And after the notice is published, and we, after the notice is published, then you actually approve the budget amendment. And this is.
Okay.
This is charted. You have a motion?
It's there. Should approve the clerk to make the notice?
I move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Okay, any discussion?
Yes. I wanted to put on the record, hey, Mr. Doyle's gonna answer these questions, and I won't be called alive, but, from here. Uh, on the record, if you know Mr. Doyle, how much business is Zarko made before you left, you know?
Unfortunately.
I know.
The president, unfortunately, I do that now.
Hey, well, it's a hundred and thirty thousand. But I'll come back with it, with facts. It's okay. And I remember what I said to the citizens, that we weren't going to pay any of that money. People, watch what you say and watch what you do. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Assistant on roll call?
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Peter La?
Yes.
Schramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Six A's, no names.
Okay, one name.
It's one name.
I'm sorry, one. I was just saying one. Sorry, six A's, one name.
I was correct.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I got it, Councilwoman. All right, we're on item thirteen. Uh, we need to suspend the rules again. So is there a motion to suspend rules?
Move. Support.
Has been moved and supported, roll call, on suspending the rules?
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, what would you guys say with what?
We're suspending the rules, we're going on item number thirteen.
Oh, okay, no.
Peter La?
Yes.
Schramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Six A's, one name, Mr. President.
Okay. Now I need a motion to go on item number thirteen?
Move.
All right. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? The only discussion that I would make is the fact that we voted to have a forensic audit done back in June. It has not happened, and I will vote supportive. Uh, roll call?
Carter?
No. Oh, my goodness.
Carter?
No.
Miller?
No.
Peter La?
Yes.
Schramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Four A's? Four A's, three names.
Okay. Welcome to the city, Mr. Carrington?
We know, right?
Yep, I don't know if you's, is, um, you're calling out, but welcome to the city. Um, which brings us to item number seventeen, I believe. Am I correct?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve? Oh, we have, we have to suspend the rules.
Mr. President, there's item number fourteen we overlooked.
No, we did fourteen already.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We, we did that at the same time that we did, uh, the number ten.
Oh, I stepped away. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So is everybody on the same page? We're on number seventeen, right? Okay, great. Uh, so is there a motion to suspend the rules to go on this item?
I move.
Support.
All right.
Who was the support, President? Sorry.
Waterman.
Waterman.
Get some heat back right now. Yep. So it's been moved and supported. Any discussion on, oh, this, uh, roll call on suspending the rules, I'm sorry.
Miller? Miller?
No.
Peter La?
Yes.
Schramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
No.
Five A's, two names.
Okay, rules have been suspended. Now I need a move in support to vote on item number seventeen, which is a resolution to accept Oakland County twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one ATPA sub recipient agreement with the city of Pontiac and unforbidden mayor to sign the document. That's presented. Is there a move in support?
I move.
Has been moved by people, supported by waterman. Any discussion? Okay, Assistant on roll call?
Peter La?
Yes.
E?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
No.
Miller?
No.
Five A's, two names, Mr. President.
Motion passes. Uh, I think that are through all of those items. So we will be going back up to item number five, which is a resolution request to go in the closed session. Attorney Chiller?
Good evening, Council President. Unfortunately, it appears that our workers' compensation outside council that was going to present on item number six is no longer available this evening. Uh, and so we would ask for a motion to go into closed session on the issue set forth at item number five, which is an attorney client privilege on random that's exempt from disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act and is therefore properly discussed in closed session under Open Meeting Act. It's important, I know a lot of council members have spoken this evening about wanting to know what's going on in the negotiations. These closed sessions are how we do that, and that's why we brought many opportunities for this council to go into them previously, and I hope for you to do so tonight.
So this is in regards to the Phoenix Center? I don't think I heard you say that, Mr. Chiller.
That is correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to go in the closed session?
Move. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I have one.
Please go ahead, President.
If there's going to be a document that will speak for itself, it is not the time to have any oral presentation from any of the attorneys. If not, then I won't be going to closed session.
The purpose of the closed session is to present some fairly clear charts that will be elucidated by Mr. Givney.
So the same old, same old.
Again, it's giving, it's the very information this council has, and they have not had the opportunity to receive, but has voted multiple times to reject this closed session. So I really ask that we have the appropriate votes and that we can provide you with that information that you have said was so important. And I agree, I want this council to be aware of where we are, of the potential options we currently have, and to keep you updated as we move forward. You asked for that, that's what we're trying to do with the closed session. So I hope that I have all the council's votes in support of this.
Uh, Mr. President, I've got one last statement. Uh, going into this closed session was only pertaining to the lawsuit of items that existed to November of twenty eighteen, and nothing else?
I, I apologize, I didn't understand the question.
I'm trying to speak, Mr. President, on what was in, what was in the lawsuit. Is that only the things that we got, that will be discussed? Nothing to do with capital improvements or anything else? This is what happened in the lawsuit and the timeline. Thank you.
No, this is about the current options on the table to, that may represent an alternative means of resolving Phoenix Center litigation prior to the November first deadline.
Can I speak, Mr. President?
Yeah, Councilwoman Miller and Attorney Gibbs.
Okay, actually, this is a diary to my colleague, Councilman Carter. You know, Carter's going, I don't go into these closed sessions, but you know, we've been such, we've been distant media. We've been talked about like a living dog. And I think it's two hours for our constituents to hear what they got to say because it's the same old, same old. We know what to do. Uh, because it's being told, we don't listen and we're not, we're not making any suggestions with this. And I, I would ask you, I, I want to go into the closed session to see if there's something different. Let's see, let's see if we got any viable R and P. Because this is about people. And I think you and I both know BS will be here, so we do, we know what to do. Because we're going over the same old, same old thing every meeting, every closed session. That's why I chose not going into them. It was the same, everything was just the same. So I'm keeping an open mind tonight. I'm going to go into it and see what happens and see if we got someone vital that's really going to take this thing in our right hands. So, Mr. President, that's my comment.
Okay. Attorney, uh, Gibbs, and then we're going, uh, we're going to take a vote.
Actually, Council President, I think Councilwoman Miller really gave a great summary of what I would say, which is we've got a very good, efficient presentation that shows the proposals that come in, financial impact. Uh, it's not in any way the same old, same old. So I wish you would come in with an open mind. I think all of the council will be enlightened by the information and we can get some consensus and some direction as we really want to move forward.
Okay. Attorney Sharp?
I just wanted to feedback off of what was just said by our Councilwoman Miller and Attorney Gibbs. I would just recommend and suggest to council actually going into the closed session to hear in the event that there is new information that's in the closed hour. Uh, but enough to be fulfilled, but a try. But I would definitely go in and listen and see if there is something viable so that you guys can do, you need to do in order to move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Would that be said, roll call?
Schramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Oh, yeah, yes.
The paper from the nine, Mr.?
Miller? Miller?
Yes. Yes.
Seven A's, one names.
Okay, uh, this link will still remain, um, open, um, and then we're going to the closed session, and it will come out.
What, what is the link?
Do we have a link?
I'm sending a link now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But if everybody could use, if someone was looking at the link last time we were in closed session, I think he got, uh, somebody who was on the other room or something. It leaked out from the closed session, so.
Do I need to move over here? Are these microphones open?
No, you'll have to leave the room.
Okay.
But does she have this? Did they send her the, the?
Do we have the link?
Who would? Tomorrow will?
Tomorrow will.
Okay. We can get it, move it, set up, so. Uh, a few little wrinkles we gotta iron out, but, uh, we're getting there.
Well, you have your, you have your laptop, isn't it?
Yeah, the laptop's in there.
Don't need for you, any?
No, I'm good, I'm just cleaning. I'm just, you can get the setup, I still have a, I'll, I'll bring these. I got this, yeah, this, uh, I want to get it for me. All right, so. A little bit of that, sure. That's probably painful. That's pretty beautiful.
I think we're...
Twenty-third and a half hour, but at least we're there. And they found a metcon and said, "Well, hey, we can replace what the city might pay in closing with only, only, only..." Able to find some type of replacement debt, then this would eliminate the financing and other things. But right now, you're really in a position...
...
...
Hey.
Good.
Okay, do we have a quorum to get started, Mr. Doyle? I think we do. Alright, um, I need a motion to come out of closed session.
I'd love to come out of closed session for...
I've been moved and supported. Um, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Wardman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller? Miller? He's not in here. Edela?
Yes.
Shremsky?
Yes.
Six yes, no names, Mr. President.
Okay, please set your timer, Mr. Clerk, uh, for three minutes, uh, we have public comments.
Did, did we want to suspend the rules for question meeting?
For what?
Schedule a special meeting?
Oh, yes, thank you, uh, um, Mr. Judge. Uh, so, is there a motion to suspend the rules?
I'd love to suspend.
Okay, I'll take the move from Shremsky and the support from people. Uh, roll call.
Wardman?
Uh, yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller? Edela?
Yes.
Shremsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Six yes, no names.
Okay, and I need a motion to schedule a special meeting for Friday at seven P M. To go into closed session and discuss any options related to Phoenix Center.
I'd love to support.
Okay, the move and the support and any discussion? Is there any problem with that notice, Attorney Judge?
I apologize, the Open Meetings Act only requires eighteen minutes for the special meeting. We do need to set what the agenda will be, and so I think that was accurate, that the only item for closed session other than public comment will be closed session to review all options pertaining to Phoenix Center.
Okay, uh, roll call.
Eighteen hours.
Williams?
You said eight.
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Edela?
Yes.
Shremsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Wardman?
Yes.
Six yes, no names.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Doyle, uh, which brings us to public comment, please set your timer for three minutes.
Okay, the first, um, public comment is from Joanne Green. In regards to, uh, Rochard Court, District Two. Dear council members, as a Pontiac citizen in District Two, if someone please give us answers regarding the renovation of the condemned buildings at Rochard Court. One, number one, why is Lombardo Properties working on the buildings with no city inspections being done? Two, uh, why, oh, is Lombardo Properties working on the buildings with no work permits? Three, why, why can Lombardo Properties work on the buildings prior to paying the bond required? Four, why does it appear that someone has occupied twenty-one Rochard Court? It has curtains, Halloween decorations, water hose connecting the building. Without an inspection or any permits being pulled. Five, why have, why haven't, why haven't been told there is an iss- issue to a stop work order and Lombardo keeps on working? Or why have they told there is, uh, issue, the theory? Twenty sixteen, in District Two, encourage renovation of buildings when possible. We only want to make sure it is done correctly, so far this is not the case. Yes, can use any, it's, any lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig. Sincerely, Joanne Green, Illinois Avenue, Pontiac. The next one is from, uh, Billy Swizer. Dear Pontiac City Council, I am Billy, I am Billy Swizer, Pontiac citizen taxpayer, taxpayer. A Pontiac GERS press key and a CIPRA board member. I'm writing to you about the ordinance that has been submitted to the IRS and points that the version of the ordinance that GERS passed, there were eight key differences between the IRS ordinance and the ordinance changes in the GERS recommended. Attorney Court passed changed city ordinances and without notifying anyone submitted to the IRS. The CIPRA settlement has been adjudicated and has been argued and it has been agreed to by CIPRA and the city. Section four defines what the GERS board makeup and representation is, but Attorney Court passed redefine this makeup, this ordinance should use the same terms that already been adjudicated in the settlement agreement. Shenana, the GERS board recommended executive director GERS serve as the secretary of order and to the finance director operating a finger head position. Executive Director not only can take the minutes of the meeting, but can ensure that the other tasks of retirement system are carried out. Finance director is just a title and has no direct relationship on the work that is performed by the retirement system. Pontiac should not get stuff on titles such as CEO, COO, CIO, but give the title to the person who actually does or ensure the work is done. Section forty states in part, except if a contribution is made by having mistake or fact as determined under applicable provision of the IRS and corresponding guidance. Then such contribution must be returned to the city within one year of payment of the contribution funded by the city. I've been told that Deborah Monson, executive director and prior finance officer that if there were ever any overpayments, it was always worked out in the city against future payments. How would this matter of fact incident occur and how would the calculations be made? Item eight one, CIPRA versus City of Pontiac settlement agreement requires the city to pay four point two, four point two five million to the super Viva to include funds due from the police and fire Viva. The city still owes one hundred seventy-six thousand, thereabouts, to the super Viva after paying monies to the police and fire Viva, which can be paid anytime. Attorney Court passed inserted different information into the IRS ordinance submitted that allowed the city more time. The settlement agreement was adjudicated, the language is governed and should have been used. Section eleven E allows the mayor within thirty days of taking office to elect a member of the GERS retirement emergency manager, partly close the GERS retirement to any new members. Instead, new city employees and sub-members of the Michigan Association of Public Employees Bargaining Group could elect to participate in Michigan, state of Michigan retirement system defined contribution plan. Mayor Wardman and all future mayors can participate in the same state of Michigan retirement, uh, system program. What's good for one employee is good for another. Deidre Wardman likes to say how she was around doing things like, say, in the Pontiac City Library. She took no action and then in no action since twenty-eleven, be treated just like other employees. The next one is from Tim McGraw. Hi, council, can anyone keep, keeping tabs on what going on in the apartment complex off of Glenwood and Rochard Court? On we can do better than a big blue building, can't we? We live on South Tennessee, let's remove all three remaining buildings and build something new. Thanks, Tim McGraw, fifty-two South Jones. The next one is from Suzanne Sinclair. What does it take to get immediate action on Rochard Court? Building safety has known for days that Lombardo Properties is working without permission condemned properties. No stop work order, no inspections, no action. I can tell you what's happening, condemned property, twenty-one Rochard Court is apparently occupied when it wasn't last week. Halloween decorations, window coverings and TV should make that apparent. One thing of this condo townhouse complex had a fire years ago and no action has happened. Wait, yes, it did. Lombardo Properties was able to purchase close to ninety percent of condemned condo development that was ordered to be demolished. So while the City of Pontiac hater's sole landlord has a proven record of unregistered, unexpected nuisance ridden properties, safety hazard and violations are increasing. While we are waiting for Lombardo Properties to get their vouchers in a row, this complex has become a major safety issue. Last week, they were working on the first building on the west side of this complex. They're working on unit three and concrete work due to specific on rear entry. Since last, as we can tire rear brick facade of this particular unit has collapsed onto the alley. How long are you going to wait until action is taken? For the rest of the wall to collapse into the adjacent home that is only ten feet approximately away from well as their gas meter? This isn't the only unit that's in danger of collapsing. Wall unit should have ways to them. The adjacent neighbor has had two fires this year faithfully without injury. Where are we waiting for someone to get hurt? We can tear down homes to reduce blight, but when this is allowed to go on, we will never progress. At the, at the point someone has dropped the sa- dropped the safety from building and safety, I have no idea how to sign this but to say I'm appalled. The adjacent homeowner needs to be protected immediately. Suzanne, Suzanne Sinclair. And this one is from Lady Jasper. Okay. Dear people of Pontiac, Little Cities is an innovative project that America's urban areas have been waiting several generations for. By joining as willing partners to build and create a true birth of American dream for them, the future is granted. Their Christian-based teamwork, technology products, a new and innovative digital infrastructure, little city residents will enjoy full access to the American dream. After all, Little Cities is truly where American dreams are reborn. Go to this address and Ricky article printed nationally. Who has the link, register to vote before November one, twenty twenty, if you want your shares in the Little City Development, Little City Development. Last week, I asked you to analyze number seven in special presentation how Upper Pontiac in violation of the law did not hold a public council meeting on Omega wants to incorporate additional network and did get an unwritten plan submitted as an RFP on December sixteenth, twenty nineteen to the City of Pontiac. The proposal was in part with the city to finance the Phoenix facility and purchase power towers to provide a destination and provide the tech telecommunication network through the partnership in the form of the franchise run by the city and its people. Strange that the people of Pontiac were not told that. What is strange is deliberate malfeasance of the mayor and her executive branch to misrepresent Omega proposal in his claim by emphasizing cryptocurrency. What's even stranger is the mayor and Matt Giff, her personal hire to oversee economic development of the Phoenix facility of the City of Pontiac, who never returns a call or a message, ultimately hurting the people of Pontiac having closed sessions and illegally not, not having open public council meetings. Omega proposed to the City of Pontiac through an emergency resolution to give preference to people of Pontiac for high paying jobs in telecommunications, advanced technology systems, digital network and system design to be implemented to Omega's mixed-use development Little City franchise. Omega also wants the people of Pontiac to pay for their education and the job training along with paid childcare on site so that the average citizens of Pontiac can take care of their families, which is typically not the case of government entities. We the people are the ones who pay the city officials to work for us, not the other way around. Why shouldn't the people of Pontiac be paid back on their investment in the City of Pontiac? Shouldn't the people get stock ownership and dividends? It's their money. The city's investment into the partnership provide, as the city, a return on its investment of twenty percent, which is the people's money and allows the city to provide services to the people of Pontiac at no expense of theirs. Also, the people of Pontiac who are registered to vote are rewarded with a split of ten percent of the mixed-use development and its technology systems, not to remain its attraction for business in Pontiac. The ten percent stock ownership pays cash dividends every month of its profits, thereby the city use of the tech telecommunication systems will pay into the people of Pontiac and the cost of upgrade will be reduced and the same services will be provided to the people of Pontiac at a discount. Additionally, the City of Pontiac will become the franchise of the Little City for the next ten years, that's the time. So that's the end of public comment, Mr. ... To President, where are you?
Uh, we are going to adjourn this illustrious meeting at nine oh one P.M. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Alright, that's a wrap.